Okay. I'd like to call to order the May 3rd, 2018, a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, and we will start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded, and so if you could silence your mobile devices, that would be great. We are going to start with some...oh, actually, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will start with our recognition.
So, as you guys have asked on a number of occasions for the students in the group, we have to, this body has to approve all of your field trip forms, so we spend a lot of time talking about the different trips going out all over the country and all over the world, and the school committee said, can we ever hear from the kids who go on these trips that we sit here and approve and talk about, and how are they getting in there, and what's the bus? So, we really appreciate you guys coming tonight, so we can just hear about your experiences, because these are the guys that let it happen and make it happen, so we really appreciate your time. So, Chrissy, are you up first, and then we'll do Sarah? Did you guys play rock, paper, scissors, or, you know?
I think he just put up...
Alright, so you guys are first, so Chrissy...
You guys can come on up, we just sit right here.
Yeah, and if you need more chairs, bring them up.
Okay.
We have to put it back.
We need to move in the slides.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Alright, so, I'm Chrissy Morley, I teach English at the high school, predominantly 10th grade, also 12th grade. On April 13th, we had 19 students in their beautiful green shirts, you can see, so we can track them in the airport. And three chaperones, we departed from Managua, Nicaragua. For the first five days, we worked under the guidance of Me to We, it used to be Free the Children, if anybody's familiar with them, their program called We Charities, and we worked with, they work with several communities in the Central Pacific region, really focusing on education and getting beyond the obstacles that prevent children from achieving education in that region. So, we worked with that organization for the first few days. At the conclusion of the service portion, which the students are going to tell you about a little bit more, we said goodbye to the two field directors with Me to We and continued on to the educational portion for the next three to four days in Granada with our EF field director, where they got to see an active volcano and see some of the architecture, and have a little bit more cultural immersion, seeing a local market and things like that. So, we have three of our student travelers present today, and they'd like to share some of the photos and some words about their experience with you guys. Yeah, you want to start with the pictures?
Yeah, so...
Tell us who you are and what your grade is.
I am Anna Razi, I'm a sophomore at the high school. So, the first part of our trip, as Mrs. Morley said, was doing service. We were in a community called Aguas Agrias, and, so it was mostly, our job there was to build a classroom for the community, and the classrooms, their schooling is a lot different than it is here, so they kind of, they depend on smaller classrooms to support large amounts of people, large amounts of students. So, we were helping to build a third classroom, a third classroom for this community. And part of the work, this is one of the more grueling jobs, but, so they had the holes in the ground that the foundation was going to go in. So, throughout the two days we were there, we spent, we were in the hole, we were digging and getting huge rocks out. It was a lot of work, it was tiring. And then, so we had, and then afterward, put cement in it, and carrying the buckets back and forth was exhausting. And then another job we had to do was, we had to create the rebar for the support for the classroom, so we spent time cutting so many pieces of wire to, and then we had to twist them together onto these really, iron maybe? The iron pieces, and they were insanely heavy, so we would have to carry those. We made six of them, I believe, in the time that we were there. And then, that's like, the one in the upper right corner is another classroom that was built formerly in the community. So, the goal, our goal is to make that and another copy of that, but in the time that we were there, it's hard to really get too much work done while we're there, so we were one of, there's many more groups going, and I don't think, they said the classroom will be complete until November.
Like, towards the end of the year.
Towards the end of the year, but so there's probably a group there now, but doing the same, some of the same things we did, and eventually it'll be done, but I think, the two days we were there, it was insane to see that this one classroom and the thing that we were doing could build up to be so helpful to these people, because we never really questioned our ability to go to school, but these kids would have to walk kilometers at a time, just to go to school for one day. So, it was crazy.
I'm just curious, so, how big is that building? I mean, it's kind of, I mean, there was one, I think a couple back where you could kind of see the group in front of it.
Yeah, it's...
It's like one classroom at North Andover High School.
Yeah, it's probably like this room and a little bit less, and then it's like two of those.
Yeah, in each building.
Okay, so, two of these, and then how many, how many students would be in that?
Like, thirty kids per class.
It depends. It looks like there's room for thirty, but then there'd be like sixty or seventy kids in a room at a time.
It depended on the grade, so like if it was like fourth grade, it would be like thirty kids, where if it was like more like eighth grade, it would be like eighteen kids instead.
Okay.
And the students who will be using the classroom that we started are currently, we drove by where they are now, and it's basically a farmer who donated a chicken coop, a very large chicken coop where their desks are now, where they're having their classes, and there's no bathroom or clean water available to them, so they have to walk all the way back to this area for the third graders. So, hopefully by the end of the year, they'll be on, sort of right in with the rest of the classrooms.
Hi, I'm Caroline Jones, I'm a sophomore at the high school. So, these pictures were from when we played with the kids in our last day in the community, and so we played games like tag and papapata banza, which is duck, duck, goose, and I know for me, I was really nervous about the language barrier, because I take Spanish at school, but, yeah, difficult. So, I was just worried, like, if I can't communicate with the kids, how could I play with them? But I found that that wasn't an issue at all, and I think for most of us, it wasn't really a problem, because they, like us, just wanted to have fun and get to know each other, so it was really fun to go play with them and kind of see the work we were doing, how it would benefit them in the future, and it was really good doing some of that. So then, the next day, we went to a pottery place, and we got to learn about how, like Nicaraguan, the Nicaraguan ancestors made pottery and sold it. So, they taught, they taught us how to make the pottery on a wheel, which we got to try, which was really cool, but it's hard. And then, they taught us how they put the pottery in that kiln, which was really cool. And then, we also got a chance to buy a pottery, which was really beautiful, so I know a lot of us bought some really beautiful pieces. And then, in our last day with Me to We, I think, we went to a place called Cafe de Last Time Recession, which is Smiles Coffee, run by Tio Antonio, and he said something that really stuck with me and a lot of us, I think, and he said that smiling is the universal language, which we found to be really true throughout our trip, I think, that just, even though you don't speak the same language, just smiling to someone shows that like, you know, we're both people, we're both on this earth, and like, just saying hi, and it's just a nice thing, and it was nice to hear. And he talked to us about what he does, which is at the Cafe de Last Time Recession, and he hires Nicaraguan, mostly, I think teenagers with different types of disabilities, and he hires them in their mechanics there, so as you can see in that picture, Keenan, who was also on the trip, was working on a hammock, so we all got to try it, which was cool, but they do that for hours, and it was really, it was really hard. I mean, it wasn't hard, but it was just kind of like...
Very tedious.
Yeah, very tedious. And then, we ate lunch there, which was really cool, so, yeah, it was a really good experience.
The staff there as well are all people with hearing difficulties, various levels of difficulty to people who are deaf, and cannot, and they completely depend on, he's developed his own ordering service, it's really amazing. He recognized that anybody who was deaf in Nicaragua was completely ignored. Many of them were homeless, could not find a job, could not get an education, so he's given them a job there cooking, they have run the restaurant, you order, so on the table, the kids were learning some sign language to order, in sign language, say thank you, and do basic communication there, so that was a really neat detail.
Okay, so, this was probably one of my favorite days of the trip, because I take geology right now, and this was when we went to a volcano, and we were actually able, so on the left is the picture of the volcano, and we were standing on the materials that came out of the volcano, so that's all hardened magma, and then, the one in the middle is a picture of just the crater and like everything that's inside the crater of the volcano. So, in that volcano right there, there's another crater around it, and there's a bunch of other volcanoes in it, and then, the picture to the right is when we were actually able to drive up to the top of the volcano and just like look inside and see exactly what it was like, and I just, I thought it was so amazing, I thought it was breathtaking to see something like that, and I've never had the opportunity to see anything like that, and it was so amazing. Oh, and I'm Rachel Berman, sorry. I'm a junior. So, this was on our second to last day, and we did a boat tour on the last day?
Second to last day.
Second to last day. And on the left, that's actually a picture of me on the boat tour, and so, our tour guide took us around to all these beautiful houses on all these volcanic islands, and it was so different to see them, because the places where we were, the houses were literally just like pieces of, like...
Pliers and just...
Stuff built up on top of each other, with just like a shingle on top, and these houses were just so beautiful, and they were so magnificently built, and it was just so interesting to see the difference between like the poverty level and the people who own like the companies and who pretty much control most of the Nicaragua economy. That is one of the flowers from Nicaragua that he's holding up, and he was actually able to take it off the tree, got it close enough to the tree, and he took it off, and he was able to show me it and like peel it open. And also, on the boat tour, we were able to see rescued monkeys, which someone rescued on the island, and we got up so close, and it was, it was so amazing. And then, to the right is when we went ziplining, and that was super fun, that was our, that was...
I think that was the same, yeah.
Yeah, so we went from the boat tour to ziplining, and I had so much fun with it, because I've been ziplining before, and I know a bunch of other people were like really nervous, and like I was able to be like, okay, like, no.
Yeah.
It was fun, like, okay, like, don't worry, like, they have it all secure, and it was really amazing just to end our trip on that, like just all coming together and being able to do like one last fun activity before we took a seven-hour flight.
And I think that's it, right?
Yeah.
Do you want me, oh, so our next trip, I can do a little preview, is that good? Okay, so, overall, and I was excited about, because we are working with Me to We again, which was, I was excited about after working with them, this is the first time we've worked with that particular NGO on the ground, and they were very impressive with the organization, safety. We actually stayed in our own group home for the first few nights when we were doing the service work, so we had a place all to ourselves with our own security guards and everything, it was done very, very well, they've been doing it for a long time, so. But our next trip is in Ecuador, also with Me to We, possibly with the same coordinator, which would be great. It's expedition and service from the Galapagos to the Andes, so this is going to also be broken into two parts, so the first six days will be again with We Charities, doing again education-based service in the Andes, in an Andean village in Ecuador, and then the final four days will be an excursion to the Galapagos, so we'll get to go to the Charles Darwin Research Station, and tour some of the other islands around and learn about the different elements of nature and the wildlife that are there. That's in total an 11-day trip, and at this point, we've got 24 students enrolled and seven kids on the waiting list, so, yeah. And then, I also wanted to take the opportunity to report out on the Live Your Learning Education Fund, because you guys have been so involved in supporting that as well. We are going very strong, so at this point in time, we've awarded 10 scholarships for totaling roughly $16,000 in financial aid that we've been able to award, providing financial support, and it's been for students who went to the DR, students who went to Nicaragua, students on both the 2017 and the 2018 trip to Yellowstone, the French Exchange, and the Chorus trip to Canada. We've been able to help students go on all of those different experiences, so we're in good shape, yeah.
Thank you for handling that as well.
Thanks. So, you'd recommend to your classmates and colleagues that, taking one of these experiences?
It was really enlightening, I think, and it definitely makes me want to go on more, but unfortunately, there's seven people on the waitlist.
I wish I had signed up before, because I'd never been out of the country before, and to go to Nicaragua for my first time out of the country was, it was crazy. It was a lot of culture shots, like when we first landed and we were in Managua, and we were on the bus, it was pitch black, it was nighttime, but I was still like looking out the window, it was crazy.
It just, it changes your perspective on everything that you used to hear, because like we take clean water in school for granted when they have to walk miles to go get clean water or even food, and like they had to ride their bike for seven kilometers just to get to school for one hour, and it just, it just puts us so much into perspective how granted and how lucky we are.
Probably no cell signal, too. Maybe even harder.
Lucky break.
I'm just kidding.
Do you want me to give a, can you, for the senior captain, do you mind waiting?
No, that's fine.
Is that alright? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all for coming, it's very exciting to hear, appreciate it.
And Ms. Durkin and team also agreed to come, did you bring all the medals, or they wouldn't fit in the room?
Yeah, right.
They wouldn't fit in the car, and there's two of my arms are hurting, like lifting them out.
Yes, yes, right.
We've all seen pictures, nightly news had all the pictures of your medals in there, so...
I figured it'd be a little ostentatious, so we'd bring...
Going to need a new building.
I'll speak real first, and you guys can take over my seats, and I meant like, it's not enough of my seats for everybody, so...
You can bring up more chairs.
Bring up more chairs.
Bring them all up.
Bring them all up, this is an informal gathering.
I mean, we're all used to being close and tight.
That's right.
I know, right? Yeah, until you've been standing on those chorus risers for forty minutes, like this.
Under hotlights.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
Command performance.
I can sing tenor and bass at the same time.
Anyway, so, thank you for having us, I'm Sarah Durkin, I'm the choral director at the high school, and we are unbelievably honored and blessed to have had the year that we've had, and for these students to be able to have the opportunities that they have been able to have, and some of them are going to be speaking to you, not just about what we've done this year, but about what these trips have meant to them over the past few years, because Joanna and Arin are both seniors, and the other three are juniors, so it's, they've been on a lot of different of these experiences, and I think that, and everyone's had, taken something different from them, so. But anyway, so this year, we had the opportunity to have two different travel experiences. The first one was Scott and Black Singers went to, did a performance tour in Canada, and actually, it's kind of a weird story, we were originally supposed to be going to Puerto Rico to do a, to do a cultural like immersion workshop, and that, like Latin American music is something that's really important to me from some experiences that I've had recently, so we were all so excited to go, and then the hurricane happened, and so we were like, oh no, what do we do? And our focus this year was music of the Americas, and how, although we may be like several different countries spanning, obviously, the entire side of our hemisphere, that we do have so many commonalities, and so many things we do the same, and things that we do different, just because of how our culture is, and just understanding how those similarities and those differences make us who we are in celebrating them. So, we had the opportunity from the same tour company to go to Canada, and so we're like, okay, why not, let's do it. So, we were able to go to Montreal for the first day, where we performed in the Notre Dame Basilica there, and I know like they'll tell you when we, like, just walked in and we're like, oh my gosh, like, I, some of them were like, we're performing here? I'm like, yeah, we are, and it was like an honor that the man who is in charge of the performance space, he says that, he's like, I've heard so many groups come through here over the past however many years, he's like, and I've rarely ever been able to say this, he's like, but thank you for your performance, so, yeah, they, it was amazing. Actually, we had a lot of families from North Andover that came to watch the performances, and I know my husband's family is from Canada, so they were able to come and watch us, too, who've never seen us before, so it was really like exciting for me, too. And then after that, we went to Quebec City, where we performed in like a small little chapel there, and we were able to bring some of our Latin American music that we worked on earlier up to perform in Canada, so it was like, it's first, we were some of the first groups to perform this music in the United States, and then we were able to perform it in Canada, too, so that was an enormous honor for us. And people were coming off the streets, just coming into our performance and staying for the entire time, and they loved what they were doing, and then, our final day, we performed in a church service, and although it was in French, actually, only I think two of our students were able to understand the language, one of them who was Muslim, so she was like, it was a whole new experience for her, but it was something that, it was one of those experiences that truly allowed you to see how music can transcend all language barriers, all cultures, all different types of people from different backgrounds, because it was, in my 10 years here, and I'm saying so with confidence, it was the most powerful performance of my life, and everybody was in it at the same, I, you know, it's, I've never cried when conducting in my entire life when I cried, because it was, it was so powerful. So, that was like a really amazing bonding experience for the kids, musical experience for us, and just like an honor to be able to bring what we do internationally. And then we also were able to take the entire choral department to, we did like, normally we do these national competitions that are based out of different areas, and this time, we did one that's based out of Boston, so it was local, we just did, we did a boat cruise, and we did some other fun things, and all three groups were able to perform in Beverly, actually, at Short Country Day School, and be the hometown group was really fun, but it was a real honor, especially, and I, and they're going to talk about the treble choir, we have a new treble choir that was formed this year, that was added into the schedule, and how they were able to, in six months, be able to be as successful as they were, and they'll talk about that, and that was just like one of the most amazing experiences ever. So, obviously, we're very successful performances, but I think more than anything, it was just able for them to be able to understand how like working hard and valuing our community in, how we are as individuals, and how that makes us powerful as a group, I think that was what was most important, so they'll, sorry to have a lot of talking, but I just wanted everyone to understand where we're coming from. I'm going to go first, Jo.
Double mics. In case you can't hear me, my name is Joanna. I'm a senior at the high school, and I've prepared a little bit more than she has to say, so I'm sorry, but being a senior at Nas has been quite the journey, if I must say so, but I can't imagine what it would have been like without the trips. Before high school, I had only been out of the country once, and the farthest I'd go for family vacations was North Conway. Since my four years in the music department, I have traveled to places like New York City, Williamsburg, Los Angeles, Montreal, and Quebec City. These locations have brought me the best memories of high school, and I know I'm not alone when I certainly say that these have taught me things that I'll carry on for the rest of my life. These wonderful experiences offer a great way to learn one another, because you're all there alongside those who share a common passion, that being music. After every trip I've been on with the music department, we all seem to grow closer. Having reached the point of repeated success and recognition of our talents and accomplishments around North America, these trips really warp our students and directors into more of a family who enjoy the feeling music gives to them. With the terrific efforts of our association run by parents and volunteers, NEMA has allowed us to absorb these meaningful experiences without the worry of expenses. NEMA has taught us the benefits of group fundraising and how hard work truly pays off. From student-coordinated live music events to restaurant fundraisers, to charitable performances and individual fundraisers, students and families work hard together to make these trips available to those who are interested. These trips are not only amazing experiences for those who gain more friends and fond memories, but they teach us lessons about life, family, music, and dedication. Many go on from here to seek higher education in the art of music from the inspiration they earned from this. We've recently had the opportunity to perform our music internationally in the most beautiful churches in North America, and not only was the architecture beautiful, but the interconnection we had with one another, our director and the people of Canada, made it all more worth it.
Hello. My name is Arin Hyland, I am a senior at the high school. Many of you may know me, because I am Paul Kays and Mike Grants, not son, but I've been working for them for the past four years, but today, I am not here to talk about the IT sides of things, I am here to vouch for the music department and the experiences that I have culminated over these past four years. As Joanna said, you know, I've been to New York City, Los Angeles, Quebec City, Montreal, we went to Atlantic City last year, and all of these experiences have been, I mean, I don't come from typically, you know, high-earning families, so when I am able to go on these experiences, these trips, it's truly like nothing else that like, it's really hard to explain, because you're there with your friends, you're there with, you know, the people that care about you, you know, you're there performing music, and music is such a universal language, you know, they were talking about smiling being a universal language, but the music has that same effect on people, and, you know, the things that people have said to us, in Los Angeles last year, we performed this piece called Precious Lord, and a man came up to us afterwards, and he said that it was his wife's favorite song, and he had sung it to her on her deathbed, and he hadn't heard that song in a while, and he was able to hear it from us, and he said it was the most beautiful thing ever. And it's just that sort of personal gratification that is really important and that you don't get in a lot of other places. It is something unique about music that is so engaging with the people singing and with the audience, and, you know, it strikes a certain type of emotion in a lot of people that, you know, it helps them feel again, it helps them, it helps them do all these things again, and it's just such an important part of my life, and, you know, all these experiences over the past four years that I've been able to go on have been, you know, essential to my high school career and to who I am as a person now. You know, this year, the town has brought in social emotional learning, which is a very important thing, and I applaud you on that aspect of your master plan, but I think looking in a local scale, you know, I mean, obviously, local, but the music department and all these experiences, being able to sing, being able to express yourself, being able to be vulnerable, these are all really important things to social emotional learning that I think that not a lot of people look at it like that, but, you know, music is such a powerful tool, like I said before, and it plays such an important role in social emotional learning, so I, you know, think about it, you know, and, so, thank you for having us here today, and just thought I'd share my experiences.
Thank you. I don't know how I'll follow that up, but, my name's Kat Jakes, and I'm a junior, and I'd just like to start by saying that you'd think that standing on a couple risers with over 100 students would feel extremely cramped, and it is, but I'm honestly, and this is going to sound cliche, but I've never felt a stronger connection with a group of people before I joined chorus, and especially with treble choir this year, because it's a newly-formed group, and it was extremely hard at the beginning, because it, like, we were all so disorganized, not disorganized, but like, we didn't know what to do, but Ms. Durkin did like an amazing job in guiding us, in like creating a new group, and all that we've, like, completed this year was really amazing to experience, especially on the Boston trip, because we view ourselves as, I think this is just like a human thing, where we view ourselves as less than we actually are at times, where we can look at ourselves and be like, well, I'm just Kat Jakes, like, I haven't like succeeded in anything, and then we go to a different place, and we like see all these other groups, and like we complement each other, and we tell them how great they are, and they say that back, and we actually see how, like, it boosts our confidence in a way, and I think that's like an amazing way, like, I think that's what I got from the trips that was really nice, where it like boosted our confidence a ton, and all that we've done this year with, like, a lot of it came from Mrs. Durkin, where the connection that we have with each other is really, really strong and unbreakable, and I think that's what I got from everything, and I have much less prepared from them, like, compared to them, but, thank you.
Okay, hi, sorry, I'm getting over bronchitis, so my voice is a little weird. So, my name is Katie de Blasio, I am a junior, and I'm part of treble choir, so, actually, just a quick little backstory, I actually joined chorus as a last-minute decision in eighth grade, my teacher was coming around, and I quickly put chorus at the top of my classes I wanted to take, and I can confidently say that was the best split-second decision I've ever made. So, I, I'm in treble choir, and this is new this year, and it was very nerve-wracking going into a small group and starting it from the beginning, and I was terrified. going into a small group and starting it from the beginning, and I was terrified, and it took a lot of work, and it took a lot of tears going into it, it was really difficult. But the work and the bond that we did and we created was the most rewarding experience I've had so far in my life. I'm, I've always been a very artistic person, and I think that having passion for art can often be difficult, because it does not always translate into some sort of award, because the whole point of art is that it's subjective, and not everyone gets it, and I think that it can be kind of hard to pursue art and do art, and this year, the validation we've received from the awards and all the hard work we put into it, again, is the most rewarding experience, and it showed me that all the love and everything we've done this year is, just, it's been amazing, and I'm so grateful for the trips and the experiences, because they always motivate us and they inspire us to do better. They made us tighter and stronger as a group than I ever thought we would be, and the trips and the program in general, it's, it's made me realize that I want to pursue visual arts in my future, and that's because, even though the performing arts are different from visual arts, there's a beauty in this program and in art that has shown me how important it is that we share our passions to make connections, and I'm so grateful that I learned this. I'm so proud of this program and grateful for the opportunities, and, yeah.
Hi, I'm Jordan Mongell, I'm also a junior, and I'm also in treble choir. And just to kind of paraphrase everything that Kat and Katie have said, and also Joanna and Aaron, this year, we've had the opportunity to create a family of sorts, like, a little bit of like, a motley crew, you know, kind of assembled quickly at the end of the year. But in the past, what is it, like, eight months, almost, we have grown, each and every one of us have grown as individuals, and as musicians, and as people, and as a group. We've had the opportunity to create something and construct the foundation of a new group this year, and it couldn't have happened without the help of adjudicators, people that have come in, and of course, Ms. Sturken. Everything, all the work that we've put into, like, something that we didn't know what the outcome was, has paid off, and it's like, been even greater than anybody could have expected it to be. I like to say that we're not a group of singers, we're a family of artists, and that's kind of all I had to say.
Like, what the kids, I think like, it's hard, sometimes you see like, all the trophies and the awards, and you think like, oh, great, you know, whatever, but I think like, that is just a reflection of all the work and the dedication, and their, and how much they care about each other, and how much they support each other, and I would say, if it's, if it's fun, and you guys take care of each other, and then the rest will all follow, and so I think that, that's just like, when we hear from them saying, I think everyone just likes, oh, a trophy's great, you know, but like, but it's really, it's, it's, it's so, it's, that's just a reflection of what, what they're able to do, and what they've been able to accomplish.
It's much more than just a gold medal.
Yeah, yeah.
So my assumption is that there will be some more trip forms coming forward.
Well, so part of what we, what we earned on the Boston trip was that we actually were the only choir to, to earn the recognitions we were able to earn, so we, our, all three of our choirs scored above ninety-five out of a hundred, which has never happened before. So because of that, we were able to, we earned either an opportunity to perform and do a Carnegie Hall type of thing, a performance with like, a group of other kids, or do a Festival of Gold, and there's one in Nashville, and there's one in Chicago, so, yeah, lots of different opportunities to work with, if you get to do the Festival of Gold, which is kind of like, what we're considering the most. We get to work with a world-famous conductor, that would give them like, an hour-long individual clinic before, and we have three different performances during the week, so it'd be really incredible. Like, one of the people we're looking at is, I mean, I'm Christian Gracias, he's from Venezuela, and, and he's the director of choirs out at University of Southern California, so like, some people like that, who we get to work with, so it's like, a real incredible honor to grow and learn from the best, you know, but.
So we'll look forward to the trip forms. We'll soon know what you've decided to do, right?
Yeah, we gotta figure some, Aaron, some details out, but yeah.
Appreciate you all coming in and sharing your passion and your, your experiences, and look forward to, good luck to those of you moving on, look forward to the next performances.
What's your spring concert?
It's Thursday, May thirty-first, at seven.
And the chorus and band together?
No, just because we have so many groups, now it's like, hard, because they, like, it's really long, so we're doing separate concerts, the band is, is the week before, I believe that's the twenty-fourth, I think, of May, and then ours is the following week, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all so much for having us.
Thank you.
We appreciate hearing.
Thank you so much.
From you. Okay. If we can invite Liam and Caitlin to come up and hear some more about what our students are up to?
So, kind of, we have all that going on. Kind of. So, just last weekend, we had junior prom, which was really fun, I mean, the weather was unfortunate, because we had sunny, then rainy, then sunny, it was on the rainy, but I think it all was handled really well, and I honestly had a ton of fun, so I think it was a success in that mindset. Another thing going on this weekend slash tomorrow is the eighth-grade play, they're doing Wishful Thinking, which is like, a twist on The Monkey's Paw. I've been helping them out for a little while, and it's, I mean, I'm so proud of them, because like, just seeing like, the evolution, it is amazing. I was like, I do know that there was like, an issue with like, like, there was some sort of thing where, on like, some sort of website, it says that it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but it's Friday and Saturday, but there are two showings on Saturday, one at, I believe, one, and the other one at seven, rather than on the two separate days, those were the musical dates, just to clarify that a little bit, because I know that was a confusing thing, but it should be really great.
AP tests are coming up pretty soon, got a whole bunch of them, now, next week, I know, I'm, I am, I, hold on, I know, I know, I know. I always, I want to get it out of the way, we're almost there, I'm just, it's on my mind, and I just want it over with, all right. Uh, other, we got our big Alex Farisi Memorial Youth Track Meet coming up this weekend, it's really big, whole bunch of athletes signed up, so it's gonna be really fun, it's exciting, meet every year, and this is the tenth one, actually, so, yeah. Otherwise, parking situation has improved a lot, there was one day where big tickets handed out to all over the place, yeah.
Mr. Cardy shared that one.
Yeah, and that seems, everything seems to have died down lots of spaces now, I think a lot of sophomores found, found their place, if you will, but, and then, small follow-up on the vaping situation, I know we, when it was talked about at the other meeting, one of the things talked about was the underclassmen, and one of the questions raised was where are they getting it from? My younger brother is a freshman, who's not involved in any of that, obviously, but, but he, from him, he said that someone he knows anonymously said that there is, and just to be on your radar, I know this is kind of out of your control, but there's a, some sort of shop nearby that doesn't card, is basically their source within the area of North Andover, so, yeah. Otherwise, I think.
I was like, trying to think of a positive thing to follow.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have one.
I was like, not this weekend, but next weekend is Shakespeare, you know, everything's...
Baseball team had an amazing beat. Beat number one Central Catholic, and then beat Andover, right, back-to-back days, so that was a big day, big few days for the baseball.
And softball's on.
Except for...
Twelve innings. They, they... Three to two, twelve, ended up going twelve innings against Drake it, very exciting game, evidently, so. That's awesome, that's incredible. So thank you, guys. Now, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, you're in a row.
No, no, go, I was gonna look.
Matter of fact, I just want to say, I want to say thank you to you guys, and everyone who spoke earlier, for perspective.
That's right.
Today, I mean, this week, I've had a few emails this week from, you know, some grumpy parents, you know, had a meeting, we'll talk about it, about the SBC, fights between contractors and architects, and, you know, we're basically volunteers up here, and to hear you guys come here, it just, it puts things in perspective, this is why we run for office, to hear these kind of stories, and why we're excited to serve the school committee, so just thank you for sharing all the stories, and.
Anna Rozzi, I can't believe you're gonna be sixteen next month. Unbelievable. Wow, we're getting old. Anyway.
They had a fire drill, they had senior surveys, they gave out the SOS forms, did you feel like all those went well?
Did. I think the fire drill was a little sprung upon us, but it seemed like, from the report that we got back, it worked the way that it was.
It's supposed to be sprung on you.
I mean, that's the idea.
I was in a dark room in photography, so we all had to single file, just move the door around, we're like, this is gonna, we were like, what happens if it's a real fire? They're like, oh, we pull out the door, we're like, how do you know it's a real fire? We're like, hmm.
Otherwise, yeah, I think the SOS and the other went, went fine, yeah.
You're just trying to get through those AP tests, and you'll be ready to think about that right now.
Oh, gosh, I don't even want to think about them.
Any other questions for all of our fabulous students here tonight?
I just want to quickly echo Mr. Farisi's statements, I mean, I really appreciate you guys coming and giving us perspective, and just, from the trips and then the chorus experiences, I mean, it's always just fantastic, and just, having been a P-school volunteer and living outside of the country, and teaching in classes that were, you know, fifty kids, half the size of this, and, and understanding the difference in, in all of that, for you guys to see that, I'm really glad to, to see and kind of understand that perspective that's there, and then, for Mrs. Sturken, I mean, I think I say this to you every year, kind of like, graduation, like, when I hear the kids sing and they perform, and they're just so amazing, and they're so beautiful, and what's amazing is the juniors leave and the, or, I'm sorry, the seniors leave and they go sit down, so they can graduate, and it's just, you know, the underclassmen that are there, I'm like, are they gonna get to that level again next year? And every year, you just keep raising the bar on your own, and, and you just, you don't exceed it, you blow it away, so thank you for the amazing program that you've helped build.
Lot of dedication all around. Thank you, guys.
May I formally dismiss the students to go study and?
Oh, sure.
Things like that.
Sorry.
Ms. Morley's gonna stay for a moment, but thank you, guys, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Makes a big impact on us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. If we'd like to move to our consent agenda approval of minutes from last Thursday?
So I will move that we approve the minutes for the April twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's five oh, thank you. So the chair's report, I just, a couple of things, just in case the community isn't aware, I think it was yesterday that the Drummond Playground was officially closed to be renovated, which is very, very exciting to a lot of our families who are yet to have even kids come into our school system, but that'll be closed, I think, the next two and a half to three weeks, and then it'll be open and all brand-new, so I think that's exciting information. Just a reminder that the Prestash Awards, where again, the volunteerism from all the people in our community is celebrated, is on Wednesday, day nine, at the North Andover Country Club, yes, and so, please come out for that, and, and some wonderful people are being recognized this year. And then, third of all, just a reminder that our town meeting is on Tuesday, May fifteenth, at seven PM at North Andover High School, and we do have childcare opportunities available, you do need to sign up in advance, but that's entirely free, and we hope that people can take advantage of that and be part of town meeting.
Do you just have a meeting prior to that?
I know sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but.
Yes, we put down that we would have a meeting prior to that, I don't think there's anything major we have to discuss, but just in case something comes up, we'll just meet beforehand.
Are we gonna meet that week as well, the seventeenth?
Well, we, after that, on Thursday, yeah, we do have a meeting at the end of the week. Yes, that's on the schedule.
We will provide dinner.
On this...
On town meeting day.
Yeah, okay, great, that's all I had.
Christie, do you mind coming back up? So I thought I would take an opportunity, with Christie being here, to just update you all on senior, the capstone project, and how it's going, and I'm sure you might want some folks to come in and see some stuff in a little bit, so turn it over to you, Christie, thank you.
So this year, we have nineteen students enrolled in the senior capstone program. We are planning on, we're working around the, the AP tests, we're gonna do it after, their presentations after the AP tests, and around the Math MCAS, so this year, the presentations are gonna be split a little bit, so they'll be on May twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-fifth, and you all will be getting a formal invitation by Monday, with the specific times of the day, it's gonna be in the library, again, we thought that worked really nice last year, the technology in there was amazing, so easy to use for the kids, and it's just a nice, smaller atmosphere, so that the, the audience can really hear the kids, and question and answer went very well. So, yeah, this year, we have some exciting projects, some similar to last year, some very different, we have, you know, we're, it's a learning curve every year with different ideas, we sort of just react to the ideas that the students have, so we have students working on some education theory projects, we have students getting into the elementary middle schools, observing classrooms, one student is looking at the ideal design of a kindergarten classroom, and what that should look like, she's read a few, yes, so I was like, this is perfect, we're doing this right now, so she was looking at that, and she's been observing some of our kindergarten teachers and seeing their, touring their classrooms to see where, you know, why they design things the way that they do, and then comparing with her research on some other countries, and the way that they make decisions in their kindergarten classrooms. We have another student who's doing, he works in fabrication as a hobby on the side, and he's also a snowboarder, so he's looking at trying to create an environmentally friendly snowboard out of recycled plastics, so he's working with his cousin, who's a fabricator, and trying to put those things together. We have other students who are doing, one student's working with Nicole Murphy, looking at social emotional learning, and how we can help teachers understand things a little bit better, and working on a flow chart, and sort of observing Nicole Murphy and some of the work that she's doing. One new thing that came up this year is we have a job shadow, so in, one student really felt strongly he wants to be a physical therapist, so he said, I don't really have a physical project, but I would like to spend my ten hours shadowing a physical therapist to see what that job is all about, and if it's something that I want to do, so we were able to hook him up with a physical therapist, who's actually also a North Andover resident, who works in Woburn, and he was able to get some time out of school to go and do some hours, ten hours of observation, and keep a journal, to enforce, I think it ended up reinforcing his beliefs that that's really the career path for him.
That's great.
So we have some really varied projects this year that we're excited about.
I love that, I went to many of them last year, and I absolutely loved it, so look forward to that again, and thank you, and thank you for all the various things that you're involved with, that are, that are varied, outside the, the basic curriculum, it's really important, and I think it's very, our students are very unfortunate that they have these opportunities, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you guys for supporting it, because it's all, this experiential learning, it requires some trust and flexibility, and it's not easy to give that sort of leeway, so we really appreciate having it, to be able to give these kids these opportunities to explore things that they might not normally have the opportunities to, so.
That's fantastic.
I think that you haven't had so much yet.
Eleven. This, that's it, almost doubled, right? I mean, that's terrific.
And it is, and it's running next year, so we got, I, I got my schedule the other day, and it's on it, so I know that it's running, I don't know the numbers yet, but I know that there's enough that it's running, so, yeah.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you so much, all right.
Just to say, I mean, I love, you know, at the elementary level, you know, at least at Kittredge, you know, they do the fifth-grade expert project, and they kind of, you know, grow on that, and then in eight, the middle school, they do the science project, and so it's, you know, whatever they kind of, you know, excites them is what they grow on, and I think until we started this three years ago, this is our third year, right?
This is our second.
This is our second year? Okay. You know, there was nothing at the end of high school that kind of mirrored what I think we were doing in this, so, I mean, I love this, I wasn't able to go, I think I was away last year, but I'd like that there's three dates, because I know I'll be here for at least one of the three, I hope, so, thank you very much, I mean, I just think this is a great way to end kind of the North Andover, get into deep what you love, so, thank you.
Well, especially at a ti- a window of time in their academic career, that could be very casual. For them to really pursue something that interests them is a good use of their time, I think that's fantastic.
And, and I think it's important, it gives them an opport- this is gonna sound antithetical to a show, but it gives them an opportunity to see that failure's not a bad thing, so they push, we encourage them to push themselves and try something, and allow them to say, well, what if it doesn't work? I can't present something if it didn't work, and so, well, no, but that's how you learn, you try things, and if they don't work, then you adjust them, and you move on from there, so I love that it's an opportunity for them, they're, they're very grade-oriented, so for this, the presentation piece is pass fail, so for them to have that reinforcement on... So, for them to have that reinforcement on, no, you tried something, you put the work, you know, you put the work in, you put the effort in, you put the time in, and it didn't work, or you came across these obstacles that caused you to wind up in a place that you didn't expect to be, were gonna wind up in, and that's okay. That's great. It's more than okay. So, again, that flexibility can be scary, I think, for adults and students involved, but it's such a great learning opportunity. So, thank you, guys, again.
Fantastic.
Those of us who are in these positions, you know, you can create an atmosphere for people to be able to do stuff, but we need people like you who are willing to leap. And so, I just really want to say thank you. You know, you and I talked many years ago and I said, come on, we can do it. And it hasn't really been we doing it, it's been you. So, I just really, really appreciate it. And I look forward to supporting Lilith, at least for many years to come, and supporting your work. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
We have five years of writing, by the way.
Yeah, it's not really about me, let's be honest. It's about Katia.
That's right. Good. Okay, do you have anything else?
Yes, the only other thing I wanted to say is we had a wonderful retirement event this afternoon over at the Stevens Estate Joint Administration Union, a wonderful event. There must probably have a hundred and hundred and fifty people there. We got to honor our retirees, so Joan McQuade, Lori Rottler, Sue Mergo.
Sue Howlett.
Ms. Howlett and...
Ms. Howlett, Ms. Haley from Kittredge, Ms. Howlett from Thompson.
Yes. I think that was it.
That decided to participate.
Yes, and it was just wonderful. And it was so nice to just be together. It was very well attended and it was nice to be able to honor administrators and teachers at the same time. You were there, Christie. That was a nice event. Lots of people and I think a nice change. So, that's it.
That's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying for an hour. Mr. Trissey, would you like to give us an update?
Don't forget to update from last week. You know, we continue to meet with the construction team, the architect and the OPM on a weekly basis, the subcommittee of the, of the School Building Committee. You know, we get weekly updates. Right now, what you're seeing on site is gonna be seen for the next several weeks. Excavation, digging, just getting ready for the found, you know, pouring the foundation, getting ready for the modules to be delivered sometime in late June. SBC will meet again on May fifteenth. That's why I was asking, we're gonna meet the native town meeting as well at five o'clock. So, hopefully we can coordinate that we'll meet at six o'clock or something like that.
Yeah, we won't even meet at six, probably six fifteen, six thirty.
But we'll meet as the SBC, the entire group, on the fifteenth. The only thing, other thing is, we do plan on visiting the modules being built in mid Pennsylvania. I think on May twentieth or twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah. So, there's a handful of us going down Sunday night or Monday morning to see them being built. So, yeah, things go well. We're still on, on schedule and, you know, it's an interesting experience, say the least, but no real major updates at this point, I don't think. Jim or Jen, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
It's marching.
It's marching along. It's right. And again, just thanks again to the parents for all your patience. I know it isn't easy with the changing traffic patterns and it can be hectic up there, but, you know, we're gonna get through it. It's a couple more months of this, but come September, it's gonna be a project we'll all be very proud of it. I'm sure of that.
Well, I just was there today, just picking up a food rescue thing, but I could see that they've drawn on the blacktop where people line up, like they're constantly having to rejigger that. But that's helpful, that it's all laid out and clear.
And Jen and Jim are out there quite a bit and, you know, Mary Lou and her team doing everything that can be helpful.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to our old business. So, we do have policy J I C H that we were talking about and making a couple of adjustments to based on some comments from you, Mr. Trissey.
I think it just came in, so I think Jim has to put it up.
Oh, right, yes.
Sorry, it's not in your packet.
Did I get an email?
It'll be linked. It's just, is it not linked?
It's not linked.
Oh, okay. So, what was the file?
It's not here.
It's not here either.
It's not here.
But what, I had exchanged some language with Suzanne over the last few days. And I think we came to the conclusion that, you know, what I was trying to get across may be better situated in a policy regarding medication dispensing. And that I think J I C H, as we agreed to it last time, with those, you know, those other changes that we all agreed to, was fine to go as it was, and then we could add something to the medication policy and we'll have that on as a separate gen item next meeting or whatever you determine.
So, Suzanne Egan did put that together. It's in the, kind of the nursing whole policy that's online, but we can bring that forth here. And it talks about how you, if you do take medication, it needs to be administered at school for any reason, what the forms you have to fill out, what the procedure is, all of that. And so, she was clarifying some language within that that would address what you had brought up, Mr. Trissey.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can get this linked by the end of the meeting.
Okay. And if not, we will just add it to the seventeenth.
Thank you.
But, yeah, thank you for working on that. And Suzanne did get that information together. And I know that the updates were made in the, which we're gonna get to, the handbook as well. Okay. So, we'll just set that aside and move to the school choice participation?
So, not much different than last time. I did give you some more information, because people are asking about it. So, here is the kind of information that they give parents about being able to go to a school district. You know, a school district has to allow that. And then I thought it might just be interesting for you. I hope it wasn't too much information of who allows school choice, and you'll notice you can do it by grades. So, you can see what districts allow it, two years' worth of information and are there specific grades. So, you've got the yeses and then you have a whole bunch of noes. I will say there are very few yeses in this area. So, you just all had asked some questions. I tried to provide additional information to you.
So, quickly, I was always under the impression that it was all or nothing. It wasn't a grade.
So, you can do it by specific grades.
Okay. And then the other... Sorry, hold on. No. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the committee vote not to participate at a receiving district in the Commonwealth's School Choice Program for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Witsky Lynch. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Trissey. Mr. McDevitt.
Aye.
And aye. Thank you. Five zero. Appreciate it and thank you for the extra information. I think that's helpful. So, the next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding between the North Andover Public Schools and the North Andover Youth Center. I thought that was really helpful last week to have our speakers come in and really clarify what's been happening for many, many years and what they're actually asking for at this point. I don't know if there were further questions that people had since then or if anything new has come up. Okay.
So, I will move that the committee approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the North Andover School Committee and the Town of North Andover's Youth and Recreational Services Center.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Trissey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. And now we have the superintendents evidence to work on her evaluation, final evaluation.
So, this is just the process part. You may pick up after this, Ms. Mably, but I each time just present my, the information that, about it. This is not much different than the mid-cycle evaluation. I think the only things I would note at is I tried to really think about in terms of strategic plan, things even maybe beyond the goals that we articulated that we've... And, you know, I really point to that leading the nation portion of our website, which really highlights some of the ways that North Andover is really leading the Commonwealth, if not the nation. And, you know, some information that I added, I asked Ms. Morley to come about the Senior Capstone Program. If you'll remember, there were four goals that we agreed. Two of them were shared by us. One was the decreasing class size. You know, I think, I think your school building committee update really does that. And I feel like we have a very solid plan of what we're doing, where we've been trying to reduce some class size even this year and then for next year, even continuing with the K. We know we have to backfill some of those vacated classrooms moving forward. We believe at this point it would be six additional classrooms. That will be one or two budget cycles. We've been pretty transparent about that. And I think, you know, the work that really lies ahead is how to address the largest average class sizes in the district, which is the middle school. And I think we've all, I think there's a real plan for this. And I appreciate that we've all kind of gotten on board around the issues of class size. I'm sure that we have sufficient access to technology. I'm not gonna get in the way of Mr. Grant, but, you know, we really have gotten to a place where, when, a few years ago, we were just building, 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 and now we're really strategically maintaining and enhancing. Not that we don't need additional technology, but it's not, it doesn't feel like a bit of a fire drill. It feels like it's very strategic in what we're doing and very doable, especially since a year from now. In FY twenty, we're gonna get another extra hundred thousand dollars from the CIP for technology. So, you're gonna be doubling from one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, the access to technology coming from the town, which I think will be kind of enough to continue on for many, many years to come. So, I feel very good about the funding mechanism for technology. I think Mike has done an incredible job taking over his budget and really allocating those funds and doing it very strategically, which you'll hear tonight. And, you know, the other part of that is the Medicaid funds. And, you know, we are asking at town meeting those funds to be able to go up to four hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, you can only spend what we get reimbursed, but, you know, I think that's gonna help curriculum for many, many years to come. So, those two. And then, human resources, you know, I think the big issue has been TA negotiations, and I think we're close to a TA evaluation instrument that was discussed in this very room today, which is very exciting. And they're really trying to emphasize professional teacher status and make sure evaluations are done. You know, it was only a few short years ago, we're all, not all teachers were getting evaluated on a regular basis and people were not clear about who was getting professional status. I think we've really elevated that work. And that, you know, there's a real pride in gaining professional teacher status, and that night is such a wonderful night to recognize those folks. And then the last part, and obviously, there's more here, but the last is just what I said to Christie. You know, we've done a lot of innovative, out-of-the-box kind of work around teaching and learning from the Capstone Program to Lilith and supporting all of these trips. I mean, how exciting is it, ten kids have gotten to travel this year that couldn't have afforded to travel? And then also our work with Fit Money. I'm actually meeting with Commissioner Riley in a few short weeks to talk about how Fit Money, there's a lot of conversation at the State House to create financial literacy requirements K to twelve. And there's some real motivation to think about the Fit Money curriculum becoming the foundation for, in the entire Commonwealth. And we have been the pilot. And we're actually filming a video up here at Atkinson. In a few short weeks, it's gonna kind of be the piece for Fit Money. So, it's just exciting for our town in those regards. And I, you know, as I said to Christie, you know, I haven't done any of this, right? And she's just done it. And so, it's just so fun to be supportive of it. So, I think that's the evidence as I present. If there's any questions, I'm happy, and I hope it's enough. If there's something else you'd like me to provide you, I'm happy to do so. Any questions for Dr. Price or?
No, I just want to say Bravo.
It's really, it's really been exciting these last few years, coming together on a strategic plan, coming together on progress on all these things, knowing that we can't do everything today, but looking two or three D years down the road, stabilizing, you know, funding for, for the different things like not... We didn't have a funding line for curriculum. We didn't have a funding line for technology. So, it's really made some really great progress and I appreciate your leadership in that.
Excellent. I want to reiterate what you started with, with the kindergarten. Obviously, we're, we're building a new kindergarten. There's gonna be some open classrooms in elementary schools. And in light of a couple of conversations that have gone on recently, I think it's important to tell the community again that, obviously, you're not gonna be here. But, you know, going forward, I think the goal of this school, I hope going forward is to every year, add a few more teachers so we can keep on reducing class size. I don't think anyone thought, you know, next year, we're gonna have sixteen brand-new teachers in, in all the elementary schools. And I think, you know, some people may have heard what they wanted to hear, but I know you've been clear. I think the school has been very clear that we are gonna do our best and hopefully add a few teachers every single year going forward.
And I know that Dr. Gilligan is committed to that. I mean, it's a plan that's very clear. We just have to get there.
I mean, we're a year or two away from getting to every class within the guidelines. I mean, it's at, what, fifteen point three percent or so? And, I mean, just to think a few short years back, I mean, these guidelines were laughable, thinking about it. We'd say, oh, these are...
They were just goals. We do it in both goals.
No, but at one point, I remember a discussion, we said, why do we even have them? Because there was physically no more space to put anyone in.
Right.
And, you know, I think the one good thing that I've heard this weekend, anyway, and Dr. Price and I were talking about it, is there are some people that said, we want smaller class size, and we couldn't agree more. But the plan has always been pretty clear going forward that, you know, we're going to have that building. We'll open up the space and overtime. But we're really close.
Well, I'm just thankful that over the last couple of years, you've been able to work with all the other, the principals and everyone with the budget with Jim and everything to add the four teachers we've added the last couple of years before we even built the kindergarten and found some temporary space at Atkinson, found some temporary space at a couple of the schools, Kittredge, to add four people in that weren't even around. There was no way to do that before. So, that creative work, otherwise, we'd be looking at ten teachers next year, over the next two years. We're looking now at six. So...
And we forget, we put word language back into the middle school and got rid of...
That...
Grade level, right?
Yes, I am very grateful for that.
And librarians and reading specialists. And so, you know, again, I think it's just been, we've had a plan and we followed the plan. And I, and the challenge with the plan is, it means you can't do it all, right? And so, I think we've been very strategic, no pun intended, with our plan. And I appreciate, you know, again, as I've said a hundred times, and when we present the plan moving forward, it's not me. It's this whole team and it's the bigger leadership team, and it's the Christie Morleys of the world who are willing to step up and do it.
And I'll definitely just plug the town side again. I mean, I think people gotta remember how, what a cooperation we have with the town manager. I mean, we're doing all this within the tax levy. You know, we haven't asked for an override from the taxpayers to get all this stuff done. So, I think that just shows you what kind of great leadership we have down on one twenty Main Street.
I could not agree with you, Mr. Moore, more than that, Mr. Trissey. He's amazing. He's, and very creative.
That actually is pretty much what I was gonna say. I mean, I follow a number of different communities, kind of with the Massachusetts School Committee Association. And I would say probably over the past, I don't know, two or three weeks, the number of things that have been out there about, you know, cutting positions, budget gaps, challenges that are out there. And, you know, I hate to say, like, we're not there. Like, I think we were there, you know, a couple of years ago when we did get rid of some, some reading specialists, I want to say maybe four or five years ago. But the level of collaboration that we have with the town, with all of the boards, you know, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Town Manager, you know, the superintendent, I mean, I can't imagine working in some of these other communities where, you know, you just know you're slashing and it's, it's adversarial every single meeting. And, you know, we have differences and we put them aside for the betterment of the town. And that's not here, and that's not something that I think we could measure you on. But, I mean, I think you're a key spoken in that wheel of the partnership and, you know, the give and the take and the collaboration that's there. And we voted on the youth center tonight. And that's just, you know, another example of just, you know, expanding that North Andover kind of community and the space. And I think you say it all the time, you know, North Andover's special. It's just, it's everybody kind of being here. And this isn't reflected in here, but it is. So, thank you.
And we've never had to call the cops while you were here.
Hey, can I just clarify one thing?
Bar high.
When we said we had you locked up for five years for Lilith, it's actually your wife.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Any other thoughts? Thank you. This is great.
So, do you want to do the process going forward?
Yes, so, we, I've sent to all of you the link to the Google form to fill out your evaluations of Dr. Price in these various areas. And then, I'll make sure that that all gets compiled and I won't access it till after the deadline, just compile it and send it all back out. And at the meeting on the seventeenth, we will do your evaluation. Unfortunately, one of us will be able to be here. We'll still allow him to make comments. To have it all compiled and ready by the seventeenth. I don't remember what I told you. I think it was the Monday before. So, I think it's the fourteenth. Yeah, I'm pretty sure I chose the Monday. Yeah. Thanks. And if anybody has any issues, contact me and I'll help you figure that out. It's another great thing about something like Google, that we can just, it dumps in, sits into a place till it's all done and then we can put it together. So, it's helpful.
So, I think, I apologize about J I C H. I think we've had a few go back and forth and around the bend, and I actually think, and I'll ask Ms. Lagar, I think it's best that we just table...
Yeah, let's just do it next time. Yeah, let's just do it next time. It's fine. It's fine. I don't wanna-
I don't wanna put the wrong one up.
That's right.
And I, I just, I apologize. We, we was down to the wire to get this done. So.
I think it's also helpful to have it up against this, the, the new thing that Attorney Egan's been putting together about the whole reminding people the forms that you need to fill out should you need to administer medication at school.
So thank you. If I would just push it off. I'd rather not get it wrong.
Rather do it appropriately. Absolutely. Okay, great. So for new business, Mr. Grant, right? We have our, the presentation on the status of technology. Did you need to say anything before that? Or go right to Mike?
You know, so the only, to introduce Mike, you know, Mike was an assistant principal at the high school who in a, in a moment of weakness, I think, agreed to become in charge of technology for the district. And I remember my first day coming here, and he said, "Okay, here's Google." And I said, "And here's Word." And he said, "No, here's Google." And I, I would just say even personally, Mike has pushed me in a technology way supportive. I will never use Word again. And so I also think that Mike has been incredible in the last year and a half, where we really pushed hard to give him complete control over his budget, which was something that I think was frustrating that you didn't have. And so, you know, the thing that's most amazing to me about technology is we have not increased the line item for technology one cent since I have arrived. And it's really been around ownership and strategic planning. And Mike has just been fantastic. And so I think this is a really wonderful example of doing more with just the same, frankly.
Right. Yeah, no, thank you. So I can't believe it's been a year already since the last update. A couple of quick things that I just wanted to mention. Arin, who was sitting here, who mentioned that he works with Paul in the IT department. He's worked with us for the past four years, and I, he's been unbelievable. Like, since he finished eighth grade, from the summer of his eighth grade, he's been working with us. Oh, he's, yeah, he's, he's great. Does a great job, works with the teachers well. You just can't say enough about him. Paul's right-hand man. Also, too, we're, a project that we're working on, and he's actually helping out, is town-wide, we're looking at redoing all of the phone systems and like the call waiting. So when you, when you put on hold the music that you're hearing, so we're actually gonna be using recordings from the chorus as, as background music, so that we'll replace some of that old-fashioned elevated music as the background music. So we'll have some student recordings as the background music. And yes, and the power of, the collabora, the power of Google is the collaboration piece. I mean, Word and Excel are fine, but you just really can't collaborate. So like, while we were sitting here, Bev was, was watching and doing the updates, and she was the one that actually put the link in for the J I C H. So as we're, as we're sitting here, she's going through and watching and remotely updating the documents that we were, we were working on. So it, it just has changed the way we actually work. So just a quick update on where we are and where we've been. So last year, we, we did about thirteen point eight tickets per day, per day, and we're about the same this year, so thirteen point six. So it's pretty consistent with, with last year. We're, this year, we've got sixteen hundred tickets in September through March twenty-fifth, which is when I had done the, when I pulled these numbers from our, our ticketing system. So it's, it's just, it's very consistent. Most of the tickets are revolving around, "How do I do something?" Or like, "I'm having a problem with this. Can you help out?" Very few issues with the network, with our Wi-Fi. It's been fairly solid. There's, unless we have a power outage, there really hasn't been any, any major issues with, with anything. So it's, the ticketing pieces is going fairly well. One of the things I'm trying to get the teachers to do is provide a little bit more information when they submit a ticket. Just instead of submitting a ticket saying, "My student can't log into Google," just say, "Johnny Smith can't log into Google." Because then we can, the minute we get the ticket, we can start working on the problem. So just trying to, trying to like change a little bit of the behavior. Not asking for a book, but just, just a tiny bit more information.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
So have, have you seen the nature of the tickets change to be like more sophisticated questions? Or are they the same type of support they're seeking?
So more sophisticated. So like, Christie Morley was asking about the, the Capstone Project. So they have a student that's working on a program that they're trying to, that they're trying to do some programming. And we, she wanted to have, see if we could have that installed on one of the computers in the library. So, so Arin was the one that installed the program in the, in the library. So tickets like that, that are asking for more, like, "I wanna do this. Can you help me, can you help me with it?" Rather than, "My mouse doesn't work."
Right, right.
So technical issues. So it's more education-related, curriculum-related type, type questions.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. The district website. So Hillary, we hired this past, last year, and she's done a great job getting our website kind of cleaned up, being consistent, very pleasant to look at, information is easy to find. And she just continues to work on a daily basis. She's also a graphic designer. So on the, actually, the main page, we have at the bottom of a site that we created that is a, it basically has all of our colors and our logos. It's a branding page. And we found that in the past, there have been so many different logos that people just pu, pull from the internet and just stick on something. So we figured we'd try to put together a place where people can actually find a consistent logo or design, and then just use that on a regular basis so that they're not like stealing things from, is it Rutgers?
Rutgers.
So Hillary created the, the knight that's up there along with a few other logos that are on the site. And the middle school, I think, pulled some. We have high-quality graphic, like vector images. And they used them to create new mats that, I don't know if you've seen the mats at the middle school. When they redid the floor at the, in the gym, the mats in the back of the backboard, they have the big giant logo of the knights in the north end of our middle school. So it looks great, and it's just, it's, it's been, I think, useful for parents to be able to say, "Yeah, I'm putting together T-shirts, or I have this that I wanna do," and I can point them to the page. And, and they've just been, been able to pull that information right from it. Any questions on the website?
No, I think it's great. And I love the fact that, you know, that it's integrated. And it was before, but you know, integrated now with the Twitter accounts and all that stuff. So, I mean, it always feels like it's refreshed. And I think people comment on that all the time. Like, you know, every time I go, it looks different. And you know, it's a new face, or it's, you know, something new that's happening in our schools. And they, they appreciate seeing that if they don't happen to follow N A suit.
Right.
So, so I mean, I can't imagine they don't, but you know.
That's great.
So a big project that we started, that I kind of started this year, just looking at all the data that we end up having, all the systems that we use, I decided to go through all of that and clean up all of our data. So we use a number of different systems. Frontline does our, our special ed software. They also do our, like the HR, there's some HR software that we use. Obviously, Power School, Tyler Technologies, Immunis, School Messenger, G Suite, Meal Magic. Meal Magic, we're actually looking at moving to the cloud, so we, it'll be another server we can get rid of. And the food service department will actually save quite a bit of money moving it to the cloud. So it's cheaper, cheaper on a yearly basis. And, and then they don't have to worry about updating the server and the software. It's all done remotely. But part of the project was just going through and cleaning up all of our data, and also, also looking at the security levels of, of the passwords that teachers are using. Power School, in particular, I noticed that there was a password, you could actually have a single letter as a password. So I removed that option, because I'm sure teachers would like to just type in the letter A to, to log in rather than type in a long password. So I've changed that so that it's, it's required that they have to put in a little bit longer password. And some, there's no complicated characters and letters and things like that, but it just has to be a certain length. And then adding all the, just updating, so making sure that Power School and School Messenger are syncing, so like, we update everything on a regular basis. So School Messenger gets updated with teacher information and student information, so that when snow calls go out now, it's, it's the correct phone number. We're not doing it manually, so we don't have to go through and look to find it. If Power School is our, our main data source, that's updating School Messenger. It's also updating, it'll be updating the special ed software as well. So we're looking at using single data sources to update all of our other systems, rather than having manual efforts to update different information. It just makes it easier in the long run.
And that's been clear, too, for parents, because they used to get so many different forms. You've gotta update this, even though I know you've already done Power School, we still want this piece of paper. You know, getting rid of all that, so parents know when they make a change, I go to one place.
Right.
It makes a big difference.
Yep. So Google and Chromebooks. So as of right now, we have over twenty-three hundred student and staff Chromebooks, which is an increase of forty percent over last year. And we plan to add about four hundred more this year, probably more, and I'll, I'll get to that in a little bit. The replacement cycle is about a four- to five-year replacement cycle. And that really, I can qualify that a little bit. The Chromebooks will last as long as they're not broken. I mean, as long as the battery lasts and as long as they're not broken, they are updated on a regular basis, and they, they seem to be lasting. We're, we're still using ones that have been purchased over four, almost five years ago. And the batteries are still lasting. So we, we will keep them as long as they're, as they're usable. But we will start replacing some of the ones that are broken and damaged and getting those, getting those out, out there and, and just making sure that the students have devices that are, that are well-maintained. And, and for the most part, the kids take pretty good care of them. We have, we've lost, like, I think I've said it before, we've lost more teacher laptops to spillage, like spillage than we have student laptops. So the kids are actually pretty good with, with taking care of them. We will be, like I said, we'll be replacing some of the older ones this summer. And when we do add four hundred more, we'll be up twenty-seven, over twenty-seven hundred Chromebooks, which is pretty close to a two-to-one ratio.
Amazing.
For devices. When, when I first started, we had maybe a couple hundred devices that-
And we were looking at B Y O D policies.
Right.
I mean, so to have almost twenty-seven, or just over twenty-seven hundred is-
Well, you're seeing it in elementary schools that they're being used much more. It used to be that they weren't used as much at, at that grade level. But like, my fifth grader knows about Google Doc sharing and how to get into her, she knows her password and, and work on stuff she's been working on at school. And it used to be that you didn't get anywhere near that till you were at least in the middle school.
Right.
So that's fantastic.
Yep.
Five years ago, Mike, the Thompson School could only cobble together about twenty-two working laptops. And that's the metric I always think about. This is just amazing.
Yeah, for the whole school.
For the whole school.
Right.
And, and yeah, and no additional staff to maintain and support this. So it's, have the same number of staff maintaining and supporting astronomical increase in the number of devices. And it's, it goes, I think, to how easy it is to manage Chromebooks and Google, and using the Google products to, to do that. We have fifty-six hundred active Google accounts, student and staff, three hundred and forty-seven active Google classrooms at the time that I created this, which is an increase of thirty-eight percent over last year. So we're increasing the number of Google classroom users.
Can you just tell me a little bit about, what does that mean? I mean, so I'm, I'm thinking, you know, at the middle school, for example, I mean, when they've got an, one English teacher, you know, for a team, and that comes through four times, does that count as one? Does that count as four?
So if a English teacher is teaching four sections?
Yes.
They're gonna create four different Google classrooms. So that one teacher may have four or five-
Okay.
-classrooms.
Okay. Because I thought that if it was, if it was per teacher, I was seeing that number was really high. So that helps to clarify that.
Yep.
Okay.
Elementary teachers would probably just have the one.
Of course.
Unless they wanted to split the same group of kids into like English or math, and, and they could split it that way. But makes sense just to have probably one. Thank you. And part of, I think, looking forward, I think it may make sense to start pushing out Google Classroom to everybody. And there are products to be able to do that, so that we go through our Power School system and sync that with Google Classroom. And it will automatically create the roster of students. It'll create the Google Classrooms based on the schedule information that's in Power School. So I know there are some teachers that use Moodle or other systems, Edmodo. But it, it may make sense that this here would be like a standard, and then if teachers wanted to use an additional system, that would be fine. Because Google Classroom doesn't require additional sign-ins. Once the kid logs into a Chromebook, they're in Google Classroom. So it wouldn't need, it would just be a, another resource for them to, to have. Because we're looking at pushing out, you know, sending out, like have a teachers, have teachers push out information to students. And this would be just an easy way for the students to be able to get it at home, at school. So that's kind of the direction we're looking at possibly moving is just, as standard, just kind of giving everybody Google Classroom. And, and if they wanna use it, they can just easily, because it's sitting there waiting for them, they can use it. And if they wanna continue using Moodle, like at the high school, it might be more beneficial to their class to use Moodle. They can continue to use that as well. But it might make sense to do both. And also, there's a ninety-four percent seven-day active Chromebook. So every, in a seven-day cycle, ninety-four percent of the Chromebooks are being used, which is pretty good.
Yeah. And the coolest part is if he knows exactly who's, they're not, where they're not being used. So if someone says, "Oh, I need some," they can go on. And if there's a cart that hasn't been, isn't being used, we can reallocate it. And someone can say, "But," and we can say, "Yeah, it hasn't been used." So that's the other really amazing part, is that we can track like each machine. And a lot of it is, we've worked really hard to have almost thirty Chromebooks in each cart, at least twenty.
Twenty-eight to thirty.
Twenty-eight to thirty. So that might be this twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth that don't get used. That's different than if the whole cart's not being used.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the focus this summer will be, a lot of the four hundred will be going to the high school. The high school has six carts right now, and we're gonna add six more carts. So it's about a hundred and eighty Chromebooks. And the purpose is, the high school's moving to the computer-based testing for MCAS next year. So having the number of Chromebooks available for the sophomore class to be able to take the MCAS, because they, they do, usually do it all at the same time, similar to when they do the paper test. And it would just make sense to have enough Chromebooks for every sophomore to be able to take the MCAS at the same time. And adding a hundred and eighty more would, would do that to the high school. So we should be in fairly good shape next year. So next year will be a hundred percent computer-based testing if the state pushes us in the direction for the high school, the high school test. This, actually tomorrow, where the high school's taking a field test, the math, they picked, we picked a hundred kids.
Oh, right.
And they're taking a, a field test for that tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So.
Do they, do the kids know that?
They do. Yeah. And messages were sent home to parents, so they, they're aware of it, too. And so far, we've been, we'll be finishing up, I'll get to the MCAS in a second, but we're, everything's been going very smoothly. So there hasn't been really any issues, other than minor little battery dies, or the teacher didn't plug the card in, or just something that's not related to the MCAS itself, but just kind of management pieces that we can do better at. Model Classroom. So this summer, eighteen classrooms will be completed. Seventeen of those, or sixteen, will be at the kindergarten building. We're gonna be replacing the rest of the projectors at the high school. So we'll be pulling out the old, old ones and putting the rest in there. The students will actually be doing that. So like Arin, and if he, if he works in the summer. And the rest of the, the kids will actually do all of the installation of the projectors. And they did a great job last summer putting them in, and we didn't have to pay, we just paid for the projector, and the kids did all the work. So it worked out great. They'll all get the Chromecast. And by September, we'll have about two hundred model classrooms with the wireless capability.
That's incredible, right?
Yes.
I mean, think back, like, when, when, three years ago, I was like dodging cords and rolly projectors. Like those projectors that are on the, the thing, the rolly projectors?
Yeah, on the little carts, and the kids pulling the cords out.
She was in the A D club.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so yeah, so this, this summer will, will be, the, the major focus is gonna be the kindergarten building, and I'll, I'll get to that in a second as well. So computer-based testing, just a quick review. I already talked about it. So the high school's doing the field test tomorrow, where year two of MCAS, hopefully, less tech support will be required. So, so far, that's been, that's held true. Teachers have been doing a great job. The principals have been doing a great job managing this themselves. So at first, they wanted tech staff on, like, to be like hovering over and helping them. And we haven't had to. A couple of times, we've had to intervene, but for the most part, they've been taken over and doing it themselves. We provide training for the teachers and building principals. All regular testing will be done by May twenty-second. And I created a website that helps the staff find all the information that they need in one place. The DESI site is kind of hard to manage. And throwing things in Google Docs or in, in the drive and sharing it with people, they'll never find it. So it made sense to just kind of create a website that just makes it easy for them to, to get to everything.
Remind me, well, next year's sophomores have taken the MCAS on the computer when they were in eighth grade?
Probably, yes.
So, so it'll be a new thing for the high school, but not a new thing for those students that are doing it?
Correct.
That's exciting. And that's because we chose to do that before we had to do that.
Correct.
Yeah. Which is a testament, Mike, because when they first said fourth and eighth have to take it- take it on the computers and no one else, we were thinking, how are we going to do that? Next thing you know, we're doing all the grades three to eight.
Right.
Yeah, it just made sense to do them all at once, then, because now, like, we're in the second year, it's, teachers are used to it. So if we did the training, like, if we just tried to do the staggered approach, we'd be doing the training on a yearly basis, and it just didn't make sense. So now, every kid has had the experience, and just moving forward, and on our end, we're very comfortable with it too. So it's just made sense to jump in with both feet.
Thanks.
These are just copies of the training documents we put together, step by step, literally, for the teachers and the principals to go through, and it literally walks them through step by step, what to do the morning of, what to do during the tests. And then we also have troubleshooting guides that we put together that helps them if there's a, if they run into a problem. So they just, this, they print these out and they have them with them, and it just, they just literally go through step by step, and it's made everybody's lives very easy.
The principals, like, almost hugged Mike when this came up, this website, right?
Yeah.
We were in a meeting, and they just, this has been so great.
Just having everything in one place. I know. No, you were talking for over a week. Secure print solution, so we're in the end of our, well, over, we're past the first year of using it. The entire town is now using PaperCut, so the town hall, the police, they're all using PaperCut. I think we're kind of like the, on the leading edge of some of these things, and we kind of like jump in with both feet, and then the town kind of just follows. So it's kind of nice. So the entire town's now using it to manage. So if I print something here, I can print it out of town hall, or if Andrew prints something, he can retrieve it here at the central office. So it's just nice having that flexibility. The reduced paper costs are expected to pay for the software by next year. Unreleased jobs since March...
That's a staggering number.
Since March 2017 to March 2018 is 125,000 pages. So in one year, just people printing something and not picking it up is 125,000 sheets of paper. So if we weren't using this, that would be 125,000 sheets of paper that would end up in the recycle bin.
Plus the ink.
Plus the maintenance on the devices itself. And that's just one piece of information. I mean, there's other cost savings that are kind of, as a result of this. I think maybe people printing only, like, printing only what they really want. I mean, and it just, they have to think twice about it, because now they, it's not just sitting there and they have to go get it, they have to like go and put it in their PIN number. So I think people think twice now about everything that they print.
And we're printing on copiers rather than small individual printers, which is a huge savings.
So less hardware all over the place.
Yes. Yeah, we, I was just saying, we've moved almost completely away from individual printers.
I mean, I'm just looking at that, you know, 125,000 pages, and remembering getting, you know, pieces of paper or emails coming home asking for reams of paper.
Right.
So they could print in the classroom. And now I'm looking at that and saying, and how many were thrown away that, you know, were just purchased out there. I mean, that's just, that's amazing.
Yeah, so the next update that we'll do probably this summer allows teachers to scan, like, teachers can scan to their email and it shows up in their email. The next update is you're able to scan directly to your Google Drive, so you can like, it goes right into your drive. So you can like scan documents and put them right into a folder within your drive. So right now, like I do, I'll scan it to my email and I put it in the drive. So it just saves that extra step from having to manually put it somewhere.
So one of the devices, and I don't remember what it was called, that we saw out, I think at the Atkinson, that they were using kind of on a desktop, basically. Not a desktop, but a literal table, if you will, was that they were, you know, scanning from there and it was projecting on the wall. Is that what you're talking about when you're saying scanning, or are they going to have to have a separate scanning device?
Nope, it's the copier.
It's that cop...
No, it's the Rico copier. So the Rico copiers, you put your, when you make a photocopy, you just put it in and it just, you can print out copies. You can actually scan...
Sure.
To a PDF, and it creates a PDF of that document and puts it in your email.
Okay.
The new version will take, scan that, create the PDF, and put it right in your Google Drive, so that it's stored there.
I think what you're talking about is the document camera, which is part of the model classroom. So each of the model classrooms have a document camera.
And that will scan it in automatically as well?
Yes.
No, not the document camera.
No, but you can take a picture of that, right?
You can take a picture of that and just put it right in your computer as well. So that can actually act as a scanner as well.
Okay.
You can do it both ways.
Because if you took notes for some reason, yes, you can take a picture of it.
You could go to the copier, but you could use the document camera.
You can use the document camera as well to take picture. Take a picture and store that on your computer.
Okay.
So there's some flexibility and options for teachers to be able to get those paper copies into their, and then, once they're in there, they can then share them with students. So then, like, you can put it in Google Classroom, and then you don't have to print out a million pages, you can just share that with the classroom through Google Classroom, and then the kids have access to it on their phone, especially at high school. They're on their phone all the time, they can look at documents. My daughter does it all the time with her math, like the answer sheet, she'll go back and check the answer sheet.
Right.
Let's see. So planned infrastructure upgrades, so this, so far, we've completed Kittredge, Franklin, Thompson, Sargent, Middle School. High school and central office have all received brand-new switches and cable, like the cables and connection to town hall. So this summer, we're doing Atkinson in the Early Childhood Center. I saved Atkinson till last because I knew kind of ECC was on the horizon, and so that will be done as kind of a package deal. So Atkinson and ECC will be done this summer. ECC will get new Wi-Fi in the new building. And also, we're going to be looking at replacing all the cables. I'm going to start looking at next summer, replacing all the Wi-Fi cabling for the elementary schools. The cables are old, and they can't handle the data that we're pushing through it. So all the other cabling's fine for phones and computers, but the Wi-Fi access points can handle like a gig of data, and the cables can only handle 100 meg. So we're using, the bottleneck right now in our whole network is just the cable within the building. So next summer, we're looking at upgrading just the Wi-Fi cabling in each classroom so that we can put an access point in the classroom, and the network will be even that much faster.
And when you say next summer, do you mean 2018 or 2019?
2019. Yeah, so all buildings will be 20 gig connections back to the core, so the core's town hall, and that's where we have our internet connection, and, which is a 900% increase in bandwidth over the two gigs that we currently have, or had. So the last two buildings are Atkinson and ECC. I highlighted high school with yellow because the core has been replaced, but there are 17 closets that have not. So those 17 closets are the last piece that needs to, of the network that would need to be updated at some point. So that's, that'll be an ongoing project, which the extra money that will be coming into the budget will help, over the course of a couple of years, replace some of the equipment in those closets. Any questions? Server virtualization, so all servers are now virtualized, so we don't have any individual physical servers. So that picture up there is an example of the server that the town, one's at the town hall and one's at the police station, so they have two now. And they back each other up. Each one of those can actually hold about 100 virtual servers. So if you took 100 individual server, like boxes, that's sitting in that one device. It's kind of an amazing device. So we can, so that's what our MCAS is running off of right now at the police station. So all of our questions for the MCAS are sitting on a server at the police station.
High security.
Which is less maintenance, lower energy costs, I mean, there's, like, you're running one machine as opposed to 50.
And again, I remember being at the middle school a couple of years ago, and there were like rooms that you couldn't use, can't go in there, there's paper, the MCAS was in there, it had to be locked up. It was very inconvenient as far as getting work done.
Right. Yeah, so now the schools don't have to collect all the, like, secure the documents, secure those books, get them mailed in, then ship them back to the MCAS. Literally, the only thing they have to secure on a daily basis is the ticket that they print out with the login ID. That's the only secured document that they need to maintain and keep track of. So there's no shipping things, collecting things, locking rooms. The guidance counselors love it, like, they're, yeah, they've gone to heaven, because they don't have to like put stickers on all the books, and the booklets were a pain. So the computer-based testing has saved a lot of time for everybody. And Brad Street, so this is the major focus for the summer, looking at a .5 librarian that we'll be adding. All the rooms will be cabled for data and voice, and I have like a two to three-week window to get all that done. So this is the major focus for the summer. Was it in the plan?
No, it was a complaint.
Was it a complaint? No, it's not a complaint. It's just, it's scary because it's...
Everything that I've had scheduled.
It's just, it's a short window of, and just relying on contractors to make sure that they get their job done. If I was doing it myself, I'd get it done, but I have to rely on somebody else. So the new Early Childhood Center, Anne Brad Street will get all new phones, all new Wi-Fi, all the classrooms in the library will be model classrooms, new networking equipment that will be connected to the original building, and planning a new P A system for the new expansion as well as the existing pre-K, because that's been a complaint in that space. They use the phones for their P A system, there's no like speakers that they can do a call. So that picture there is a speaker on the bottom right, and it's a network speaker, actually, so you pop it in the ceiling, you plug in Ethernet CAT 6 cable to it, and it connects to the phone system. So you just pick up your phone and you can, you can make announcements throughout the whole building. So we'll put one in each classroom in the, in all the, in the whole building. So it'll be, it's a good solution. I have one in my office that I've been testing just to make sure it works, and it seems to be working fine. So this is, like I said, the biggest focus for my summer projects. Cameras and security, so we use Genetek for our software. High school's using all older analog cameras, but we're converting them to digital and feeding them in, so we're able to continue to use the old cameras. The middle school just installed 11 cameras and a new storage solution that has room for expansion. So if we need to add new cameras at the middle school, or if we find a place that we need to put a camera, we can do that. And we're also looking at adding, I think the sergeant was looking at putting new cameras in. We can actually use the storage at the middle school to store the video for the cameras at sergeant. So we can use the storage for, because of our fairly fast network, we're able to send that video signal over the network. The police department has access to that through the software, so they can, if they needed to, they could pull up the video at the high school and the middle school. Long-term, I'd like to see replacing some of the cameras at the doors at all the schools with at least one camera that has accessibility to the police, and then they can actually, if there's an issue or problem, they can pull up the camera and, like, if there was a 911 call, and they could actually have visibility in the building remotely. That's it. Any questions? No?
Very good. Big changes.
Yeah.
I was like Dr. Price, it's taken me two years to learn how to be a Google user as well. Just the fact that I don't have to press save took me a little while to learn, but that's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Sort of incredible. Good.
All right, I can make this last one quick, if you'd like.
Okay.
Chair Mably. So here we go. So there's just one change I want to highlight on here, but what you see printed for you is, we basically made a number of changes in our student handbook. A lot of them, you'll see in the first few pages, around including pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, as we did in our policies, if you remember. And then the other kind of substantive changes were what we talked about in terms of vaping. So if you would, you can look here in terms of the different levels of, the different levels. So if you look on page 29 and 30, we did one rule violation on page 29. There was actually not a rule violation to strike another student, which was brought to us by a parent, so we actually added that. It was, which may include striking another student. It was only just fighting, so we wanted to be very clear that that might be, that's a violation in terms of the elementary school level. And then also, we tried, we changed a lot, and the high school's intimately involved with the middle school on page 30 and 31, to ensure that we had vaping and e-cigarettes as not being, as being punishable as with cigarette smoking. And you can see that. And then, just really thinking about, not just using a phone, but apps, I mean, one of the things we have to do is constantly update our handbook to kind of get with the kids using Snapchat and all that kind of stuff. And then, you'll see that we put here cannabis and cannabis-related on page 31.
Oh, I moved too fast, okay.
So we're back to the, so, and then, we moved a few, so the smoking infraction, it was in a different place than the vaping infraction, so we felt we wanted to have those in the same, so this was just a cleanup. As you will see, it moved from a level three to a level four, smoking and vaping, in order to really be able to address the issue, which I think is something you all understand. We've gotten a little harder on vaping in this iteration of the handbook. And then the only other major change, I think we need to have, oh, sorry, is on page 45, which is actually some changes around the, and this is around the drugs and tobacco education, which we approved in our policy last time. So I wanted to just say, we've now changed the handbook to reflect those changes. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So pregnancy issues, vaping, some technology updates, and then just making sure our policies are appropriately reflected in the handbook is really what the changes are. We're not asking you to vote on it this time, I just wanted to go over them, it would be a vote at our next meeting.
Could you, Dr. Price, also talk about, like, this is the, which we're all saying we're very happy about, this is the handbook that goes K to 12, or pre-K to 12, everybody has. What about then at the various levels? There are some other things that, aren't there, are there some things like, that just at the elementaries, or maybe each building has extra?
So each building might have something about kind of their schedule and how they work and pick up and drop off, but we...
Where does that go?
So that often goes on their websites.
Okay.
So the one thing I will say is just, as you look at this, I went very quickly, but you'll notice that we do have, so discipline is really a huge part of the handbook. So if you look on page 27, we have elementary school guidelines, we have middle school guidelines, we have high school guidelines.
So they're all in here.
So they're all in here, and we felt it was important to have them all in one place, because when we looked at them last year, and we spent a lot of time, and Suzanne Egan was phenomenal on this, is we actually felt that the middle school and the elementary and the high school, it wasn't like progressive, right? And it didn't have the same language, and it didn't have the same, so for instance, the high school was quite harsh compared to the middle school and the elementary school, and that was just a reflection of how the schools did it. So we wanted to have a general sense, K to 12, pre-K to 12.
Yeah, and it had to really fall in line with the philosophy of Raze and everything else. Because, for example, the high school, under some different leadership at some different times, had gone to some things that were really putting us in jeopardy, although legal, you know, a 10-day suspension.
And a 10-day suspension's just aren't done anymore.
It's not done, and it's, you know, especially if it's a student who's on an IEP, and there are all sorts of issues, so it made a lot of sense to get that cleaned up and consistent.
And even simple things like the levels, having the same levels of infractions. We just tried to, Suzanne did some really great work last year, and I think it's important for a town, a school, district to have one handbook that reflects our values, pre-K to 12.
So one quick question, and I know they don't necessarily get a vote on it, but have this been shared, I guess it is now, but with the PTO presidents?
No, but we can do that, we meet with them next week.
Okay. I'd be curious to hear a little bit of feedback from them.
Yep.
Because I think, you know, this is the first time we're introducing the district-wide.
Last year.
Last. Sorry.
But with these new changes that are coming in, I'd just be curious.
Yeah, we can share it with them.
So.
Well, actually, related to that, and obviously, we're, it's helpful to us to see what's new in red.
Yep.
Now, for parents who have looked at this, you know, supposedly looked at it and signed it every year, it'd be great to be able to just read what's new.
Right.
Is there a way to have what's new stay red for, you know, until October and then turn it off?
Yeah, we probably won't do the crossouts.
You know what I mean?
Maybe do a highlight page.
Right, that that would be great, because otherwise, people aren't going to see what's new. Because you won't be able to remember what what's changed. So I think that'd be helpful.
Just so you do know that we have spent two leadership teams' meetings vetting this with all the principals, all the other district administration. So this is not just coming from us. This is, much of it is coming from the middle and the high school.
Major changes last year, there was a committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, even just looking at the docs, you can see not only, you know, Suzanne Egan in there, but, you know, other people with edits and stuff. I mean, you can tell there's a lot of people who who have had some input.
And been thoughtful about it.
It's great.
But maybe putting at the front of it, all the changes from last year, as a one-page or two-page.
Right, and even go to page, like you said, page forty-five or what happened.
We can do that.
That would be great.
Then we could print them all out and give them all up to.
Because the kids are supposed to sign something every year.
Yep.
And so.
So Suzanne has done yeoman's effort on this. I have to say, you know, this is one of those things where when we were paying council by the hour, it was like, oh, we'll redo the student handbook. But now that we have Suzanne, it's like, hey, let's redo the student handbook. So and she's just been great. She's met with the with the whole leadership team a number of times now. And I, just an example of when we brought legal services into the town, what we've been able to do.
That's right. But we are looking to then accept this next meeting.
Next time, if that would, you know, we'll do that one pager.
Thank you. I think we do have any public comment? Seeing that, I do know that we need to look at an executive session. So we'd be happy to hear, unless anybody else has anything else that you would like to comment on or share. Be happy to hear a motion to adjourn to executive session or go to.
I will move that we move to executive session to conduct strategy regarding negotiations with the North Andover Teaching Assistance Not to Return to Regular Session.
Motion by Mr. McDevit, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. We will see you next time.